Good evening, everyone. I'm certainly happy to call this meeting to order. And, well, I think that clock up there might be a little bit wrong, but this one is correct. 6:34. Pastor Pete, I believe that you're going to offer us your invitation tonight, please.
I kind of, fathers, we are able to be here tonight. We're so grateful for the season that we are entering Thanksgiving season. And we have much to be thankful for, especially as a community, God, for the blessings that we just enjoy day in and day out. And for the people that you allow us to just share life with through the good times as well as through the challenging and difficult times. We thank you for our city council and for their leadership and for the time that they invest and spend in order to lead this community. And we're grateful for the work that they do. We're grateful for all the amenities that this community offers as well and the opportunity to not only explore them, but to enjoy them to the fullest. And we would pray that in this Thanksgiving season, we'd be mindful for the gift that you give to each and every one of us. And as we count our blessings, we are so grateful that we are blessed beyond measure. So blessed this night as the city council leads us, and we pray this in your name. Amen.
See, then we have Assemblywoman Melissa Melintas here, who perhaps will lead us into the lights tonight?
I'm striking every part.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Bonner.
Here.
Mayor Paton Castillo.
Here.
Councilwoman Green.
Here.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Aaron Crans.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. City Attorney, do we have anything to report on the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. We have no items to report on a closed session.
Thank you. Well, and as to approval of the city council agenda, and city manager, do you have any changes to make to this agenda?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay. May I have a motion in a second to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All the favorably say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have a student of the month.
Mayor, a student of the month could not attend tonight's meeting. She had a tennis, a varsity tennis match during the playoffs, and she couldn't attend. We'll get the proclamation to her.
Oh, we're not going to parlay this till next month? Oh, I had a great story to tell about her, too.
Oh.
Okay, thank you. I better put my night garters on. Community reports. I think we're having a first-person report from Assemblywoman Melissa Melintas. Welcome.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable members of the council. It's nice to see you, Mr. Green. It's nice to see you back up there. I appreciate it. And Randy, you too. Okay, so I, you know, I'm always like the Grim Reaper when I come show up with news, so tonight is no different. But I do have a little bit of a legislative update for you. I'm not going to go over this whole list. I know you have a full agenda. But there are a few things that I want to point out for Canyon Lake residents and the council. Number one is Prop 13 is going to be on the ballot again the next election, so be wary of that, what they're going to. And I don't know what the number is going to be yet. I do know that the state attorney general has already written the title for it and the ballot summary. And the ballot summary doesn't sound anything like what it actually is going to do. So that's unfortunate. What they want to do is be able to reassess commercial property values for tax purposes. The goal is to get to residential. So once they get commercial property, the very next thing they're coming after is residential. So just be aware of that. Make sure your Canyon Lake residents know that, to not be fooled, because we are going to hear a lot of radio ads, a lot of TV ads telling us how wonderful this is and how we should reassess the property values for all those greedy landowners, not really explaining to people how unfair that is, not to mention how many businesses will disappear from your communities, because building owners will have no choice but to raise the rent. And when they raise the rent, your local coffee shop, your local dry cleaners, your local, you know, whatever it is, they won't be able to afford the rent, and they will go away. So this is not good for our community. So that will be on the ballot. For those who have children, school-aged children, starting in 2022, no middle school or high school may start school prior to 8:30 a.m. statewide. That is a big change, yeah. So good luck with the traffic, I guess, right? Because everybody's going to be leaving at the same time. I don't know how this is going to work. But that starts in 2022, the year 2022. The other one is rent control goes into effect January 1st of 2020. And they have decided, remember that, you just saw this on the ballot last election, okay? So liberal blue California voted against rent control. And so the legislature was not satisfied with that, so they passed a bill. And so now rent control will be in place as of January. What that means is it's, you can't raise the rent more than 5% a year. They also passed some other bills relating to, you know, when you can evict someone, and you have to have just cause, and the legislature hasn't really defined what just cause is. But more to the point of the rent control, we don't have enough homes for people now or enough places for people to rent. And so when you put rent control in place, your supply decreases. So the homeless population we have now that is homeless, not because of drug-related problems, but because of, you know, they just couldn't quite keep up with the bills, that's going to be exacerbated. This is not a good thing for our state. So I don't know quite how we're going to solve this problem, given that the governor signed it, but you need to know what's coming. Because you will also have builders who will have no incentive to build in your communities because the state is now deciding how much return on their investment that they can make. So what are the good news do I have here? Well, oh, I do have some good news. Okay, I'm not completely full of bad news this evening. AD-824 is a bill that I did with one of my Democrat colleagues, Assemblywoman Jim Wood. Currently, when you go to the doctor and you get a prescription, I don't know about you, but I want a generic because it's cheaper. We all do, right? The way it works now is the drug manufacturers have a system called pay-to-delay. So they pay the other manufacturers to delay the introduction of generics onto the market so that way they can keep the name brands out there longer and make more money. This says you can't do that anymore in California because we have too many people who are in fixed income, we have too many people who are barely making ends meet, and the last thing they need is to, you know, make the problem worse by causing them to pay sometimes very expensive medications that they could get for half the price or a third of the price. So that passed. That's good news. That's signed by the governor, so yay. I am going to open it up for questions from all of you, if you have any. If not, I will scoot on out here and let you get to your business, but I want to make sure that I'm available for you.
Well, thank you for your presentation, Councilmembers.
Okay.
You're getting off easy.
I'm getting off easy now. I'm going to run before you change your mind. Thank you for having me. It's brief. You know, I do my town halls every month, so that's an opportunity for everyone. Speaking of my allergies, I go crazy today. An opportunity for everyone to talk a little more at length about this, but I'm certainly not going to take up your entire agenda with this bad news. So again, thank you again, and good to see all of you guys again.
Thank you so much for coming.
Have a good night.
EMWD, Dorsey, I think it's your turn, please.
It is. Thank you, Mayor, council, staff, guests. First of all, thank you very much for putting me on the agenda. It was actually a sign for me and an affirmation that we're all getting along, both at the POA and the city and the water district. And that hasn't always been the case or the history, but I'm going to enjoy the moment, why it works out, and just be very grateful. So thank you. So I have a number of updates and some other exciting news. So Canyon Lake Treatment Plan. So we're wrapping down the operation of it for the season, so it should be off in the next week or two. It's not like a car. You can't just push a button and it stops. So while we're doing that, we are re-looking at the bids that came in for refurbishing at the treatment plant. And as you may remember from last month, I came and talked to you a lot about taste and odor, because a lot of people called me about taste and odor. And I would encourage them to continue to call me as well as the water district if they're having that issue. But we're going to go back and look at those bids and talk to the finalists about what other things we could add and what the cost impacts would be to address those long term. So it's not, the way it's built now, and it's very functional equipment, but very antiquated equipment, doesn't have the ability to address some of these in the more advanced treatment technologies that are now available. But again, that's money, so we're going to look and see how much that is. But I wanted to let people know that, especially those that were very inconvenienced by that whole situation, that it's something that we take seriously and that we're working on. They're also testing the valves on the front of the dam. So you may see water and other debris coming out of the front of the dam. The dam's not leaking. They're just exercising the valves. It's part of the emergency operations, and it's something that we do every year. And so you should see that off and on for the next week or two. I also want to talk about an article that was, got a lot of headway on social media, press enterprise, and it was basically an article that was written by an environmental working group, EWG. And it basically said, "Everything in your water is going to cause cancer." And it lists linked to very specific pages for pretty much every water district in Southwest Riverside County and actually across the country. And if you took the time to delve down into that report, you would find out that their metrics were about water filters. So I'm not saying that that was the motive, but that was the, after you clicked all the way through it and really dug down, it was really about bio-water filter. So one of the things that I think it's important for people to know is water districts, whether you're public or private, don't set the limits for things in your water. If we had it our way, we would take everything out of it, but that's not affordable. And so the EPA, when they go to set the maximum contaminant level, they spend years, decades, studying what the impacts are on a million people, what the cost impacts are for treatment, and keeping water affordable. So water is never meant to be something for those that can afford it. It was meant for all of us to drink as well as to move our economy. So it's very important that we continue to work to make sure we balance public health goals with affordability. So if anybody has questions about that, again, my phone number is pretty much everywhere on social media. I have a website, Work for Water. My email's there. I'm happy to talk to anybody about it. The Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant. We are about to start a $40 million upgrade. This happened a little bit sooner than in our long-term planning, but the Regional Water Quality Control Board is very specific. If you reach 75% of your maximum capacity of the plant, then you automatically get to upgrade it. So with the heavy rains and that type of things, guess what we reached? About 76% of our maximum capacity. So now we're spending $40 million to expand it, refurbish it, and that should start after the first of the year. We have a new general manager. Yay. Greg Thomas came to us from Rincon del Diablo, which is in San Diego County. He's a former lieutenant colonel in the Marine Corps, and he's been in water a very long time. He actually ran the water system at Camp Pendleton. So he will, I think, meet with Chris in the next week or two. He's going to come to city council in the next few months. He's just trying to get up to speed. There's a lot to learn in a very short amount of time, so I'm giving him a waiver for at least the next month, maybe see him after the first of the year. The other thing I really wanted to mention, too, is every month now in our water planning committee, we get a report on how many residents in our division are what we consider in wasteful tiers. So that they're not staying within the budget that was outlined. And since I came on the board, Canyon Lake was the worst. So we enjoy our water, I guess, in our yards and everywhere else, but for the first time, we weren't the worst. So we've made improvements, so I'm very proud of everybody. I don't think people realize that when you let the water run off your street, it runs right into the lake, and that brings organic matter, and that doesn't help the water quality. So kudos to Canyon Lake for improving on that. I'm very proud of them. Finally, we have a tour that we've invited city council and staff to, November 13th. We're looking forward to taking you through the treatment plant, the wastewater plant, our corporate offices, and getting you to know some of the staff more, know the system. We're looking forward to it. So for those that are able to make it, I really appreciate taking the time to learn more about water. It's not as easy as it appears. It's a pretty complex topic, and in California, it's a very, very important topic. I will also let you know that I asked our engineering and water resources department whether it was going to be a wet year or a dry year, and I got yes. So that's going to be my prediction. I'd have to take any questions or concerns you may have had since last month.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
You can, but I think that, well, I guess you can. We're not going to.
Thank you.
Chamber of Commerce, do we have any announcements, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. On behalf of the chamber, I want to thank everyone who participated in our 27th Annual Parade of Fridays on Saturday, October 26th in the Town Center. We had 50-plus businesses that welcomed the costume children and passed out treats and stamped treasure maps. We want to thank our sponsors, the city, the POA, the Friday Flyer, and to everyone that attended the Treasure Community event. And coming up, we have, we'd like to have everyone participate and support small business. It'll be the 30th of November, Small Business Saturday. You know, as a small neighborhood, we got a lot of small businesses, and they look forward to people helping on Small Business Saturday. And then I got a text. It came in after everything else. The chamber would like to invite everyone to a ribbon-cutting Wednesday, November 14th at Fort Beale at the Caldwell Banker Property Management New and Improved Office in the Town Center. Their office is just a few doors down to the right of Caldwell Banker Associated Brokers, and we hope everyone will join us for that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, the public safety update, the sheriff, or are you going to give that report?
Mr. Mayor, I received a text message from Lieutenant Sims while we were in closed session saying that the city of Paris had three shootings this evening resulting in at least one fatality, and so he's not going to be able to join us tonight.
Okay, well, thank you. Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and the public. Josh Bishop, the time chief operationally for Canyon Lake. The reports for September and October are in front of you, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have for this call, reports for September, October.
Sorry.
Don't be sorry at all. I apologize that you just got them. While you're looking over them, obviously, the last 10 to 14 days has been a very busy day throughout the region with the winds, and this time of year generally with the winds is busy, so we've been able to mitigate almost all the incidents. I was up in Santa Rosa, just got back a couple days ago. That fire is nearing its end, and a lot of the fires in LA are finally at a time to contain as long as, as well as all the fires within Riverside County are right now moving towards a high percent containment.
Do we have a wind event scheduled for the end of the week?
It looks like there's only a certain probability, but as right now, I was looking at the weather, it looks like probably towards Sunday, there is a chance of another offshore event. Probably not as strong as the last one, but as you know, that could change over the next week.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, that's all right. We don't need to call that. Thank you. Code Enforcement.
We're still moving forward, and I just wanted to bring up about business licensing, that the renewal letters are going out as all of the business licenses expire on the 31st of the year. So renewal letters are being sent out the middle of this month. We have everything set up and running, and they'll be generated and mailed out faster than ever before. So I did include the revenue basis, but I did want to point out that does include the quarterly TOT this month, so don't be like, whoa. One thing that I did want to point out was the vehicles prohibited within the BLM lands seem to be going up. The 26 were the people that we've been able to contact. We have BLM rangers out there with us. Their fire prevention has been out there regularly. Riverside County Parks and Rec Rangers have been out there. We're trying to work cooperatively together. A lot of citations are being issued, and we're trying to get together and coordinate a multiple-agency zero-tolerance week. So that's going to be writing a citation to anybody who's out there, no warnings, because we're really trying to discourage it because the numbers seem to be going up and nobody knows why. So that is on the horizon. It just hasn't been scheduled yet. We're deferring the date and time to the federal agents because they have the least amount of staff. Just one city update. We did submit our annual stormwater report, and city manager man did sign the form acknowledging that everything was done to the best of our abilities. We have two remaining fire sessions left, and then a task book that I'm hoping Mr. Green will help us with, that we have to complete to actually get the certification that's required under the new Fire Marshal rule. But everybody's doing really good in the class, and everybody's in the top 98%, so it's going really well.
That's great.
Yeah. Yes. Any questions?
The council?
I have a question.
Certainly.
Decals for business licenses, people that have, get a business license, that have business or truck or whatever, are we issuing the decals?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the first year that we got the decals going out?
Yes.
So will it be able to identify those who have business license and those who do not?
Yes, and we're still getting complimented regularly about asking the business license people out as we're out and about if they have their license. The people with the decals are the easiest. However, everybody that has a license is displaying it, so it is, it's really easy. Now they just walk up, and it's right there in the windshield.
Good. Number two, we talked about this, I don't know if it ever came about, because of Fridays and Saturdays that we may or may not have staff here to take a business license, do we have the ability for a person that may be caught without a business license to electronically get an application so that they could be legal and work and not have to wait till Monday?
We have the capability. It has not been launched.
Okay. Thank you.
We can be ready.
Let me ask you, are we penalizing them then? If they want to be compliant and visit Thursday night, they get a conversation about it or whatnot? What are we doing in that regards?
The way our ordinance is written, we actually have to give them three days to obtain the license from when they're issued the warning.
Business days?
Three days. We typically do three business days because we take into consideration the fact that we are closed on Friday and Saturday. But I would like to address that Fred is here on Fridays and Saturdays, and Administrative Services, Borha, and myself have been working on a single on-call phone number that he would be able to have. So if you needed him to come in from the field to issue a business license, it can be done.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gina. Do we have a report from AOR? No report. And, well, Friends of the Valley? No report. Okay. Thank you. Move it to the public comments.
Any person wishing to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the city council. The city council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you're commenting on the agenda item, your comments will be heard at the time that particular item is scanned on the agenda. Please note, if you're addressing the city council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the city council may only do the following: refer the matter to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give a very limited factual response. We'll start with Kelly Robertson.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you. Hi, I'm Kelly Robertson, and I'm honored to be this area's 2020 Census recruiter, jobs. As you know, Census is almost here and has real-world impact that affects our nation, our state, and the city of Canyon Lake directly. Data collected from the Census provides federal funds of $675 billion annually, plus some state funds by using population counts and the characteristics of that county target that you need, needs of your city. Funds may be provided for infrastructure, new roads, road improvement, bridges, development of rural areas. Money may be directed to school programs, special education, school lunches, Pell Grants, lots and lots of things. The list is long, and as of today, I counted 134 programs that are funded by Census data. It's said it's imperative that Canyon Lake gets an accurate count of residents so that every penny deserved of that $675 billion comes here. To achieve this goal, 2020 Census needs your citizen residents to fill hundreds of job openings. And if we don't fill those job openings with Canyon Lake residents, outsiders from nearby areas such as Quail Valley, Menifee, and Lake Elsinore will be in your neighborhoods during Census work starting in January through the end of June 2020. ZIP Code 92587 shows a major need for particular field positions, call enumerators, which are Census workers. No job experience is required. Position is flexible hours as work close to home. Minimum age to apply is 18. There's no maximum age to apply. Pay for Riverside County starts at $17 an hour, and if the applicant applies for supervisor position and they're qualified and selected, the pay increases to $18.50 an hour. Training is paid. Mileage for field positions is reimbursed at $0.58 cents a mile, which is non-taxable, and Census employees get paycheck every Wednesday. And this is federal employment, they'll get a $1.50 at the end. Applications are accepted online. Smartphone-friendly, taking 30 minutes or less with three easy steps. Interview is conducted by telephone for qualified applicants, so there's no need for a resume, travel to an interview, or interview attire, no bias. Members' preferences honor, of course, this tier-one hiring for eligible applicants. And my ask tonight, council, is that the city leadership consider allowing me, my colleagues, to visit center businesses with employment job flyers to help us spread the word about Census jobs, and I'd like to start holding scheduled recruiting events throughout the center, here at the center, at key locations, and inside the community at key locations until such time my leadership tells me to give up because we're not getting enough applicants, or yay, we have plenty of Canyon Lake applicants. And if you'll allow me, I'll stick around if you have any questions or anybody wants to talk to you about jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Travis Montgomery.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm under the impression that the city has received a response from the county and CalFire regarding the contract letter that we sent them, what we wanted to do. I'm under the impression you have. I don't see anything on the agenda in that regard. I, I do see that we have police, issue regarding the police department, forming our own police department. Part of the motion last month, I believe, was to notify the county, and if they did not accept our offer, that we would start the process of creating our own fire department. So I'm just, I don't see anything on the agenda, so I'm raising that question to you now, as to what are we doing about the fire department? If I'm correct, that we've received a letter saying that they could not meet our demands. Thank you.
We have no more cards.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, we have additional cards, but they're for specific items, so those comments. I apologize. Nancy Horton.
You can probably tell from the attendance at this meeting that most residents don't really care very much about what's going on at these meetings. They probably don't go on to the agendas, and they don't really know what's going on until social media heats up, and then they find out. But there is one thing that's really, really important to our citizens, and that is our Veterans Day celebration. This is the 11th year. For 11 years, Ted and I have delivered flags. There are 18 flags that we delivered this afternoon, and there are about 12 people in the city who are doing this. To my knowledge, there's no other city in California that delivers a flag to each and every veteran who is registered. And somebody mentioned this to me today when I was delivering flags. It's always a very, very special occasion, and today it was even more special by the fact that there was a new resident here who is a veteran of Desert Shield. And I, I happened to run into his mother-in-law. She wanted him to get a flag, made sure he got a flag. His family was absolutely blown away by the fact that this city does this. The wife asked if she could become a volunteer. Her daughter was there, very, just very, very moved by having this honor, and they didn't know about our celebration. That's one of the things that we do, is we ask every veteran to come to the celebration. We expect 400 to 500 people. There's no other event that is a city-sponsored event that has that number of people attending. The second thing that very rarely happens to me was that when I handed the flag to the woman, she said, "He's coming home. He's, he just left Syria. He is now in Kuwait, and he's going to be home for Thanksgiving." So that made this just a red and blue star special day, because we have somebody in this community who has been really in harm's way, wrote the blank check for our country, and has survived a very, very serious war, and is coming home. So it is my hope that everybody who hears this in TV land will attend. Everybody loves the warbirds. Everybody loves when Chuck Casey reads the poem "Old Glory." Everybody loves it when the choral players sing the service branch anthems, and the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and Coast Guard men and women stand up, holding their flags. I don't know of any other community that has such a wonderful celebration. Yes, Marietta has a Field of Honor with real big flags, 2,000 of them. We have about 250 in our little park, placed by, lovingly by people last Saturday morning. But it's the feeling of it. It's the commitment to it. It's the honor. It's the dignity, and it's the respect. So I'm hoping that this year will be just as great as every other year, that everybody will come, and that the meaning of it will be very, very important to all of us. Thank you.
We have no further cards.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the consent calendar, please.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous City Council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the City Council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
I move the consent calendar to approve.
I would like to have a comment on number two, please. The commands and demands and claims are claims.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Well, then, I guess we need a motion to approve this with the exception of two at this time.
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent calendar, except for item number two.
Second.
We have a motion of a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mayor, we'll need to do a roll call.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Councilmember Bonner?
Yes.
Mayor Prochan Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Crown?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Would you like to address item two?
Yeah. Page 21, and return to claim these demands. I just have a couple of questions, and it's worth considering the, whether it's, this is the norm on a monthly basis, but the, the electric charge for Station 681508, I don't know, that seems high compared to some of the other houses that we have. And the water bill for the station, which is $396.70, I know that we've gone to drop tolerant. And so as long as we don't have a leak or something, that seems to be high.
If I may, Mayor, we, we discussed this today in our budget and finance, so these are a couple of items that Casey and myself also brought to staff, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but we are seeing the reflection of the bill because of the summer months in regards to the fire station, which is why it was a little bit higher. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes. So the, the charges were from about the middle of August and about the middle of September, which was about the hottest billing cycle, we'll say.
For the electric, and, and it was the same thing at City Hall, too?
Okay. If we had our bills, these are monthly bills, are they pretty much on track for last month's command, uh, claims and demands?
I believe they'd be pretty well in line with the same period from last year.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need a motion to accept item number two?
I make a motion to accept item two.
A second?
We have a motion and a second, and this requires another roll call.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Prochan Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Crown?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve consent calendar item number two.
Thank you. We're going to move on to business items. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you want me to tell us what it is, or are you going to?
Well, if you don't mind, sir, I'll, I'll ask our planning director, Jim Morsi, to make the presentation on this item.
Well, I knew he was going to do it. I just wanted to make sure who introduced him. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think you've introduced me.
Okay.
As you mentioned, item number five is planning grant SB2 application that staff is seeking acceptance from the council on. As I go through a little bit of my talk, this is an item that's in flux. So at the time of the preparation of the staff report, we were thinking about moving in a particular direction, which we may still be doing. We have met with a developer, representative of POA. We're going to be doing that again tomorrow. But we've also had subsequent conversations with the state liaison for housing and community development with respect to what items we can apply for. So although there's criteria for specific plans, general plan, some changes, environmental studies, one of the things that staff had brought up was it would be a very neat little package if we could request funds, and these are non-competitive funds, to prepare environmental documentation, just the studies. But I was told just this morning that you cannot do that. What the state is looking for is the completion of a particular process. So if you want to prepare a specific plan, it's not the studies leading up to the specific plan, it's those and the specific one. If you're going to do environmental studies, then it's just not the studies themselves, it's the completion of the document, which could be an environmental impact report or a native declaration. So what staff is trying to put together at this point is a package that's going to address housing, implementation of that housing. But the particular location, if you will, and the specifics of that are a little unknown. We're going to have to get this together in the next couple of weeks. It's due on the 30th. Thanksgiving is just prior to that, so we're going to have to file it before that date. It's $160,000. At this point in time, we're going to ask that the council be willing to take us somewhat over that. I don't know the amount at this time, because, as I mentioned, it's a little bit in flux. So some of the things we're thinking about, as mentioned in the staff report, is preparation of specific plan. It may involve the overlay area. It may involve different locations. We'd also like to include some funding for those housing element programs that we had brought before the council. So it'd be the accessory dwelling unit, density bonus provisions, those types of things. The state has categorized what they call priority policy areas, which are things such as the specific plan or a specific plan. The, they also have provisions for non-priority policy areas, which would be things such as the accessory dwelling units and density bonus provisions. So they, they allow for that. And the reason we're at this point in time is we had to, if you will, negotiate with the state on whether or not we could even apply for those funds. So we've been before the council with respect to getting housing element acceptance, but as part of that acceptance, we need to do a midterm. And the criteria for the funding is that you have certified housing element, which we do not have. But the state felt comfortable when we gave them an accelerated schedule for doing some of the programs that we could go ahead and apply. We would need to meet that requirement, because funding would be provided until approximately the middle of next year. So I think I've been very vague. I wish I could be specific, but we're going to try and tailor something in the next couple of weeks. Be happy to answer any questions. One, one thing we do ask tonight, that if you are interested in us proceeding, we do have a resolution. You need to adopt that resolution. It's on the agenda, demonstrating that you've seen or at least heard of something that we're applying for, because we'll be back in front of you with other actions, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Jim. Council, any questions?
I got a question. So in regards to SB2 funding, what are, what are our actual chances of receiving any?
Well, I think that they're good. We're not going to submit just for the act of submitting. The, the state has the funds available. There are specific criteria. We will file them with the liaison group, and they'll look at them. So that's why I've been in conversation with them, to make sure that we're not heading down the wrong road. So I would think that there's a very good chance of getting that. So it's $160,000, but as I mentioned, there may be additional city funds that we would need to allocate through the next budget and possibly the budget thereafter. The actions are to be completed by June 2022, so that gives us some additional time to budget those particular items.
Mr. Mayor, based upon that response, I'll make the motion that, that we move forward and go forward with resolution number 2019-40.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion of a second. I just have one quick question, if I may, before we approve. You said the amount of funding is approximately $160,000.
That's the maximum amount for the city our size.
And could it be more?
Could it be more? No.
Okay.
Not from the state.
Okay. Okay, then I believe we need a roll call vote for this, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Prochan Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Crown?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve resolution number 2019-40.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we do have a card. Miss Nancy Horton would like to speak on this item.
Mayor, I, I believe for form, we should have a vote to reconsider the item, so that you can hear the public comments, then re-vote on it.
Okay, perhaps I acted a little too quickly then. So we're going to...
I, I recommend a, a motion to reconsider the item.
Before the motion is made, a point of clarification, we are hearing public comment on item number five, one that we just made a motion to pass and vote on. Is that correct?
In fact, passed, I believe.
I believe we did.
Yeah.
So...
Alternatively, you could hear the public comment and then decide if you want to reconsider or if you want to. It's up to you, Mayor.
Well, why don't we just hear the public comments, and then we'll reconsider it if necessary?
The last housing element that you received in the past two months ago, I read very carefully, and there were some, it was woefully inadequate as far as some factual information about our community. So if you're going to move ahead with more information, it is extremely important that you make sure that the information that's in there is complete and accurate regarding our community. We know that a lot of this is boilerplate. They do a lot of it for many communities. I understand that. But there were some details left out. For instance, in senior services, it said that we had two senior services in our community. One was the Family Matters Club, and the other one was the Case Nacerro Center, which happens to be in Menifee. Woefully inadequate as to what our senior services are in Canyon Lake. Why this is so important to us is that this boilerplate will become a document that is used in the future and could be reproduced, as far as this section is concerned, reproduced for years to come, and it's woefully inadequate. It doesn't have the information that reflects our citizens. If somebody were to read this to find out what services were available, they wouldn't understand that there are any in this community, despite the fact that there are many organizations that do things for seniors, and we have our own senior center that provides many different activities. So it is really important to get this right. And I know that your purpose is to complete this, so the county's off your back, and the state's off your back, and you want to comply. But there are other parts of it. It is a snapshot of our community, and it is really important that the information, that you hold your consultant's feet to the fire, so that it is really adequate. And if you're applying for federal or for state money for it, even more important, that it really reflects our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any reason to, to state's provision?
No, but just because it got brought up, Mr. City Attorney, can you explain to me how that would actually work?
The, the Brown Act requires that we hear public comment before action is taken. So the act of acknowledging, is there any reason to reconsider, simply allows the council's action to occur after the public comment is held. It's a common way to cure, when to be simply missing a public comment.
Okay. I appreciate that.
So we didn't step too far out of line, then?
I, I believe you're fine.
Thank you. Then we're going to move on to item six.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Every so many years, the state updates its codes related to construction. The state's health and safety code requires that local governments adopt the most recent additions of those codes. So we have that before you tonight. We've placed them into two separate ordinances. One ordinance addresses the fire code, and the other ordinance addresses all of the other codes. Our intention was to, to have you discuss and vote on both of those ordinances tonight. However, yesterday, we were contacted by Division Chief Kurt Barnett at County Fire, Cal Fire, and apparently the Fire Marshal... CalFire, and apparently the fire marshal has some thoughts, concerns about some of the language that is contained in our amendments we made to the fire code for Canyon Lake and to some of the things that are not in there. So we put the fire marshal's office in touch with our consultant, Julie. They're working through that. So we're suggesting that we pull the ordinance just pertaining to the fire code this evening, that we move that to our December meeting, let the council go ahead and take up tonight the other ordinance pertaining to the rest of the codes. With that, I'd like to turn this over to Martin Heberly, our building official, to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, council. But yeah, before you is the 2019 building codes. This state of California has adopted them and clearly mandates all jurisdictions to adopt them, which is kind of an interesting concept. It, there is no many changes or amendments that are contrary to the past, that's been regulated by the city, other than the codes themselves and changes within the bodies of the codes that the state has applied. If the city desires to make changes to the codes, we literally have to approve them and then take them back before the state building commission and get their approval. So it's a costly and cumbersome process. And so for you is the basic criteria for the building codes for the 2019 addition.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, I simply wanted to also inform the council that we're adopting these codes by reference, which is a unique procedure that you may not have seen often in the city. So we introduced the ordinances for first reading, and then we actually set a public hearing for the second reading and adoption. And so you'll notice that the recommended action in the staff report includes setting a public hearing for the first meeting in December.
Any questions? Any public comments on this item?
No public comments on this item.
Okay. Then I think we need a motion in a second to approve item number six.
I have a motion. Motion to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance 189.
Anybody second the motion?
Right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
What I need to make is substitute motion, just because the business item number six encompasses both. So therefore, I think the point of clarification needs to be made, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we're going to adopt business item number six, ordinance 189, but not 90.
Mayor, I'd recommend as long as the mover was okay with that friendly amendment to clarifying her motion, I think you could proceed.
Okay.
We're learning so much tonight. This is fun.
You're fine with that?
I am.
Okay, fine. So am I then. So then I believe we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bonner.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Castillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krenz.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 189, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake, amending chapter 8.02 of the Canyon Lake Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2019 additions of the Cal coordinate codes, including but not limited to the green building code and related model codes with appendices and amendments thereto.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Thank you. Item number seven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask our enforcement supervisor, Gina Dixon, to make the presentation on this item.
So we've had a few incidents that we've brought before the Public Safety Committee over the summer with some highly aggressive, probably under the influence, people out on the VLM land. And as you can see, in the past, our enforcement department has carried tasers and, I can't say, so pepper spray is what we refer to it as. And then the introduction of body armor because we're constantly meeting up with hunters and shooters and gun enthusiasts, which are oftentimes on the VLM land, even though it's not an area set up for shooting because it's too close to homes, too many hikers, too many dogs, next to a nature preserve. So with that, it was discussed that maybe it was a good idea to introduce these items. And in putting it together and in researching with different cities, the code enforcement departments that carry this equipment, I took their policy and a city manager man's direction, put the three of them together. This would include a training record and maintenance schedule and requirement, and updates to legislation should any change. So we wouldn't be adopting this ordinance without thinking about how it should be applied in the future as well. The equipment that we did have is extremely outdated and old. They don't even make the cartridges for those tasers anymore. So implementing this would have a fiscal impact. So we're asking for the safety equipment, but as always, we understand.
Okay. Is this, this new equipment, this taser, body armor, et cetera, does this require additional new training?
Some of us have already received pepper spray training. Fred Lopez with the City of Lake Elsinore that works for us on the weekends, he has the training. I have the training for pepper spray. However, none of us have the training for tasers. And although they are made and marketed for civilians, as a government entity, it's always better to err on the side of caution so that we're not throwing any taxpayer money away in a civil lawsuit.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think, again, I'm only one of five up here, but I think this is a no-brainer. I think we should, you know, go full force on this, especially if we can provide, you know, our code enforcement with the right resources to be effective out there. We're asking them to do a lot with what they have, and I think we should be arming them with all that we can. So for me, I think this is extremely important. I see that Larry wants to make a comment, so I won't make a motion yet, but...
This was actually pioneered by councilmember Castillo, so thank you.
I was going to say, I really like your policy. As someone who writes and helps work on these, I think you've covered everything.
Good comment. I understand that PPEs are protective personal. Are these going to be issued to each code enforcement? When we talk about body armor, we're talking about catalogar? Are we talking about it being personally fitted properly?
It would need to be by the national standards, so yes.
Okay, so and the training for the use? I'm not so much worried about pepper spray, although you shoot yourself in the face, it could be harmful. But the taser?
Yes, sir.
Ben Clark, it's a law enforcement item, isn't it?
Yes, however, we are seeking training through our Riverside County Sheriff's Office, and I've been assured by the assistant sheriff that we should have no issues obtaining that training. Should we have an issue obtaining training, we should be able to get free training from a master taser instructor from HEMEP PD, and I'm sure we could reach out to Rialto. We have avenues to get the training for free. It's just going to be a matter of paying your staff for their time to attend the training or putting it on a day that they're already working to. But city manager man is very on the forefront about having everybody flex as much as we can, just like we have for all of the rest of the training. So the cost is mostly going to be in the equipment, not necessarily the training itself.
That's fine. I think it's overdue. Obviously, you guys have had a couple of incidents where the person could have broke the windows out, you would have been assaulted, so...
And I'd just like to point out to the residents that are watching, this is a tool to give us a chance to get away, not a tool to use and stay and try to defend ground. That's not our role. So I don't want it to be mistaken for that either. It's self-protection to get out of the area.
Well said, and that's very important.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item?
Yes, we'll start with John Zeitz.
Just a quick, quick two questions. Has the sheriff's office approved this, and has your insurance company approved the use of this?
City manager, do we know the answer to that question?
Again, I'll have to ask our enforcement supervisor to come and address those questions if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor's up again.
As far as the sheriff's office is concerned, these are civilian tasers. These are not law enforcement issued tasers. This is the civilian gear, so we are allowed. However, I do have to admit, sadly, I have no idea what the insurance company would say. However, we're not asking to carry a gun. We're not asking to go in that direction. Most of us are not comfortable with that. We're following all of the protocol that law enforcement personnel would be required to do. And from an employee perspective, this is to make sure I get home at the end of the day, and it's going to cost more money than an insurance lawsuit if I don't for my family.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I can add to that, that our insurance is through a joint powers authority called PERMA. We haven't addressed this specific policy with them, however, we know that they generally approve. In fact, they offer grants for equipment and training of this nature. So it's something that they're very familiar with, and they typically cover it.
Okay, good. Any other good?
Yes, Travis Montgomery.
I asked to speak to this just after I heard some of the comments being made, and what came on as a bright light for me were the terms I heard twice, law enforcement personnel. And is this going to change the classification of these employees by practice of what they're doing, not by title of what they're doing, but by practice of what they're doing? And if so, law enforcement personnel in various classes, even though they're not armed, certainly are subject to different kinds of issues regarding licensing and things like that, and responsibilities of the cities, and it could even put them in a different PERS category. So I just raised that question to make sure everybody's aware of that because law enforcement was the words that brought it to my attention in particular.
Would you like to try to answer that one?
We are an enforcement arm that enforces codified law. That's why I use the term law enforcement. However, we aren't in a public safety classification, which is why we would be using civilian tasers, not going into that direction, staying in our lane as enforcement, as a... We do have officer safety training. These things do fall in our classification, and this is the normal code enforcement department issued equipment for Southwest Riverside County's Marietta's Code Enforcement Department, Reno Valley. Paris is going this direction. We have a lot of legislation that's going to eventually put us there, but not in the law enforcement realm. So we really caution not going into that lane. Most of us didn't go into that profession because that's not what we wanted to do. So I understand that concern, but definitely it doesn't change our daily duties, and it's not operating outside of that course of employment. It's simply providing personal protective gear.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add that this is not the first time that city staff has carried this equipment. Some years ago, this equipment was commonly carried by our city enforcement staff. My understanding is that at one point, one of our enforcement staff who is no longer with the city approached the then-city manager and said, "I don't feel that I have the proper training to use this equipment," at which time, instead of providing the training, the equipment was taken away. So I don't believe we need this policy. We're not changing course significantly. I just like, I'd just like to have things set and policies and procedures as opposed to just winging it so that everyone knows what the expectations are and the parameters are when we use this equipment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing that I wanted to add, Mr. City Manager, you talked about grants. Have we looked into it for this?
We will look into it. If the council decides to go this route with the policy, we'll be contacting PERMA to see what's available specifically.
If it's okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we adopt, approve item number seven resolution. Second.
We have a motion in a second. I believe we need a roll call vote for this as well.
Councilmember Bonner.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Castillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krenz.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve resolution number 2019-41.
Thank you. Going to move on to item number eight.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So the Canyon Lake Municipal Code provides that the city council shall adopt by resolution rules and procedure to govern the conduct of its meetings. The last time the city looked at the procedures was, and made changes, updates, was in 2015. The city attorney and I have reviewed that procedure and feel that some updating would be in order. Some of what is in here is just logistics. For example, the current policy states the time and date of the meeting. The time that's listed is no longer in line with the time that the city council currently holds its regular meetings, so some of the changes are of that nature. Some of the other changes clarify what's expected in terms of decorum and keeping order, both in terms of how the council handles itself and how the public handles themselves and how public comment is to be taken. And so I'm going to hand this over to the city attorney to go through and give a more detailed accounting of exactly what changes from the old resolution to what we're proposing tonight.
Great. Thank you, city manager, mayor. So what we've included as attachment to, which begins on page 147 of your agenda backup, is actually a red line that compares the proposed resolution 2019-42 language to the previous resolution from 2015. So I'll briefly go through each of these changes. If there's any change that you feel you'd like to ask me further questions about, that's great. It's interesting that Councilmember Smith had mentioned we're learning a lot about parliamentary procedure today. That was actually one of the changes that we're bringing up, is having a program and procedure that is accessible and understandable by the public at large, so they understand what we're doing. So going through, section 1.1 on page 141, updates the location that the meetings are held, and also adds language to when closed session will be scheduled. Our practice has been to schedule a closed session with sufficient time to handle those matters that are necessary for closed session, not to start at a specific time, so that the council has sufficient time, or can have less time. So that language has been added there. 1.3, quorum. Whenever possible, I like to add specific statutory references to why we're doing something a certain way, just in case someone's interested, and also if I'm ever put on the spot, I don't have to remember it, I have it in front of me. So that's mostly with that, if it's simply stating what state law is, so that we're all on the same page. On page 149, 2.1.4, that is a change from current practice, but what it allows is when the presiding officer notices that we have perhaps a significant crowd for a specific item, the presiding officer, without objection of any member of the council, can take that item out of order so that that item can be included for the efficiency of the meeting and for the ease of the public. 2.2 requires that agendas be posted and backup delivered within 72 hours to be consistent with state law. We had some language in there that, you know, barring insurmountable difficulties, you know, one of the questions that city manager has asked me, what is an insurmountable difficulty? I think it's better to have the state law requirements stated plainly, and then with the practice of the city manager getting you information as soon as possible. Just so you know, I did notice a typo in my own language in 2.2 as I was reviewing it. On line six, I spelled city hall with only one L. I've circled that, and I will give that to the city clerk, so it is corrected. I've circled that and I will give that to the city clerk, so it is corrected. On page 150, we changed if desire hearing closed. We do need to close the hearings to take action, so I simply changed it to hearing closed by the mayor. Now, of course, we can always continue a public hearing if that is the council's desire. Moving on to 2.6, one of the concerns that I've received from at least one member of the public, I think on my first meeting as your city attorney, was, I want to comment on the consent calendar. When do I comment on the consent calendar? So one of the things that we've added for everyone's understanding is to make it a bit clearer that if you desire to comment on the consent calendar, the appropriate time to do so is before the consent calendar is voted upon. 2.8 is to clarify the role of the city manager. He is responsible for creating and processing the agenda. The city council may direct in writing if they would like an item to be placed on the agenda. And he will do so. There is one caveat that we put there that is best practice in cities is if a request is made to place something on the agenda that will require extraordinary staff time, that the city manager has the option to place the question of whether that's going to be done on the next agenda. 3.1, I added language here that was actually present in the original version from 1990. It disappeared in 2015. And it's actually happened before where both the mayor and the mayor pro tem are absent. What should we do? Who gets to be the presiding officer? So I added that language, just to make it clear what occurs in that circumstance. On 152 and on 153, I changed references from chair to presiding officer so that the rules are consistent throughout the entire set. Nowhere else do we use the term chair in the rules, so we use the term presiding officer throughout. One of the bigger changes, and this relates to the parliamentary procedure issue, is on page 155 at 410. Until now, we have said whenever there isn't a rule here, we are to refer to Roberts Rules. I don't know if anyone here has a copy of Roberts Rules. Roberts Rules is extremely dense. It's intended for parliamentary procedure. It's very appropriate for the state legislature. It's not necessarily appropriate for an informal neighborhood city council meeting. Obviously, if you want to follow it, that's your choice. The League of California Cities recommends Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which are 15 pages long in plain English, easily accessible, and will likely require less interpretations by your city attorney to understand. And also, it's easier for the public to understand exactly what's going on when motions are stated in plain English. So that's a recommendation, obviously, to the council. One of the biggest changes, I think, to the rules is in 5.1, and this relates to public comment. What we're doing here is we're simply restating how public comment is intended to operate in the context of the meeting, which is if somebody wishes to address the council, they already give a speaker slip to the city clerk. I've already made recommended changes so that if somebody desires to address the city council anonymously, they may do so. They're not required to give their name and address. Obviously, we prefer that. It makes the minutes a lot easier to follow. It makes it easier to identify people when we call them up. But if someone wants to address anonymously, they may do so. It also goes to the procedure. The city clerk calls the name. The presiding officer invites the person to the podium to speak. They make their comments. We move on to the next person, just to make sure that the public has their spot on the agenda and has their participation, but it's done in an orderly way. Moving on to 5.2, so I restated a rule that already existed. And it's simply to say that after a public comments have concluded for an item or after a public hearing has been closed, the public is not going to further address the council unless the council actually affirmatively votes to invite them to do so, which again is to the council. There were no other significant changes, flipping through it, until you get to 162. The practice of the city has been to list the state law committees in this document. But as committees come and committees go, what it does is it simply makes our document out of date, which means we have to constantly update it. My recommendation is simply as the council decides to create committees or dissolve committees, that it do so by separate resolution. And that way, hopefully, this document will last a lot longer without needing to be updated like it is today. I have no other further recommended changes to the rules of procedure, and I'm available to answer any questions about the ones that I put through. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. On page 162, all these committees that you have lined up, does that mean that they have to be reestablished?
No, so they would continue in effect. If we wanted to perhaps direct staff to bring back a resolution at the next meeting, establishing those committees, or at least documenting that they continue to exist, I should say, we can do so.
And Mr. Mayor, it's staff's intention to do a review of all committees in December anyway, when the council reorganizes. And so we're planning on bringing a recommendation to you for committees at that time anyway.
Okay.
No, I just want to say thank you. I think this was a long time coming, some organization here, especially in the way we're running our meetings. The only thing that I would suggest moving forward, if staff would maybe allow the opportunity for some training, you know, on some of these things, especially when it comes to procedural, when it comes to how to properly poll and discuss and to talk about items. I know for me, I would love it, you know, I have a lot to learn. So, you know, if any of my other colleagues would want to take that on too, I think it would be a good opportunity. With that, I move that we accept number eight, resolution 2019-42.
Well, I think prior to that, we may entertain public comments in any...
We have public comments on it?
We do have public comments on this item. So we'll start with John Zeitz.
You didn't think you were going to get away with this without me commenting. I can't say that I tried. Well, as you know, Mr. Mayor, 5.1 was on there in 2015. In fact, I brought it up and tried to get rid of 5.1. Tried it twice. The second time, I didn't get a second nod even from you. There was a motion, though, that 5.1 never be brought up again, and it passed 4 to 1. Mr. Mayor, I just want to understand, are you going to comply with this document? And if you do, is it the new stuff or is it the old stuff too that are in there that he didn't read?
Is it the new or the old?
Yeah, are you going to comply with this document?
Well, I certainly hope that we can, yes.
Well, you haven't complied with the old part that he didn't read. And I just want to know if you're going to go back and comply with that or you're just going to take the new stuff that he talked about. It's just that while I'm talking, you can look up 3.4 and 6.1.
I rather expected some of these comments, and I think that all of these things that have been cleaned up are good and we will certainly abide by these rules and regulations.
Well, so the one I'm talking about states that when a motion's made, you state the motion.
I understand.
And you don't? And it's in there. It's been in there for the 12 years you've been on the council, in the years you've been a mayor. Just want to know if you're going to comply with it or not.
Well, the answer is yes.
Okay. Be interesting to see how the meeting goes, how you can restate it. 3.4, 6.1. Part of it that I think is interesting is that you now are going to have the consent agenda comments during that consent agenda. Part of the thing, the reason I brought it up in the first place some time ago, and thank you for doing this, and I just want to say, just to be nice, thank you, city clerk. She did something that I commented to her for years, that she got the council to do this year. That is appropriate, and it's in here that you say aye instead of yes. And it is inappropriate to make a motion to say so moved and that kind of stuff. City clerk, I'm proud that she finally got the council to do the right thing and say aye in that. But that's the law, the Brown Act, if you want to state the code numbers, states that you can speak to any item that's on the agenda, which meant that I could speak to that. I could speak to, as one of the members of the public wanted to do, to a presentation from Darcy. You had every right to get up. You didn't state that when he asked if he could do that, Mr. City Attorney. You didn't defend him and say, "Yes, you have a right to get up and speak." You didn't indicate to the mayor that he had that right. Does he not have that right? You're not going to answer it.
Okay. I think one of the rules that we may be enforcing from now on, Mr. Zeitz, is the three-minute rule.
Well, you always did it to me, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Nancy Horton.
Question I had was what happens to the committees that were redlined out in the document? And Jordan asked that question and it was answered. So now we know that they are X-ed out of this document, but they will be reinstated possibly in another place, at another time, in another document. We don't really know. It makes me a little nervous because we're getting rid of where we're X-ing out, the water committee, the economic development, and healthy families, several committees that have been standing for a very long time. And it is my hope when you go through your December housecleaning of committees that you take into consideration institutional memory and the reasons why the committees were instated in the first place, which may not be relevant to people right now. They may not be something that you're even aware of as to why it was done eight years ago, 10 years ago, or 20 years ago. But it could be a very important thing to need and not something that you could quickly pull together when there's some kind of a crisis. So institutional memory is really important here. And I hope that you won't just throw out committees because they're not doing anything right now, but revitalize some of them and make them work for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I clarify the comments I made on the effect of the resolution?
Certainly.
The resolution would not dissolve any standing committee that exists. They continue to exist as they had before. Staff's intention is to bring a separate resolution stating all of the committees at the next meeting. At that point, you would have the opportunity to create or dissolve committees as you desire.
Okay, that was my concern. That was why I was asking the question. I was wondering what was going to happen to those committees. Okay, thank you. Any other rules?
No further comments.
Councilmember Smith, we can entertain your motion now, if you think...
Absolutely. My motion is as was. I have business item number eight, resolution approving of resolutions number 2019-42.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and this requires a roll call vote as well.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krenz?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve resolution number 2019-42.
Thank you. Item number nine.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Item number nine is second reading of ordinance number 187. At your last meeting, this item was discussed at length. Public comment was heard. The council directed staff to incorporate certain changes. The city attorney has worked on incorporating those changes, and I'd like to turn this over to the city attorney to present what's before you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Several changes were requested by the city council at first reading. Those changes were incorporated into the document that you have before you. A summary of those changes can be found on page 180 at the end of the staff report. I'll simply go over them quickly right now. Section 3.44020B, the Canyon Lake Property Owners Association was added as an eligible participant. They always were an eligible participant as it was stated. However, we wanted to add that just to be explicit. Section 3.44030E, the council directed staff to amend the language to allow new residents to pay a prorated fee depending on the remainder of the fiscal year, feeling that it was not particularly fair that they should pay a full year's fee for a month or two. That's what I mean. Section 3.44040, language was added allowing for the EMS fee to actually be split into two separate fees, if that was the decision of the council, one for BLS and one for ALS. And then finally, the council directed me to also add standard boilerplate provisions to this ordinance, including separability, a sequential termination, and publication sections, directions for the city clerk. Those were the changes that were made. It's before you for second reading and adoption if the council so chooses.
Staff, excuse me, council have any questions in the staff? Any other comments from the public?
Yes, we'll start with John Zeitz.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to address three things that's on the ordinance motion itself. It says, "Whereas the number of calls for emergency medical services have increased dramatically." And also another, "Whereas," at the bottom, "based on a survey of similar cities that have implemented such programs, the city finds that this program is good." And then, "The high volume of calls for medical services represents a significant training on the finances for the city." I asked the city for the information on the number of calls. I wanted to see the document that showed that dramatic increase. And I also wanted to see the survey. I was not allowed to do that. Said that must have been done on the yellow pad, and that's not something that you can ask for. So it wasn't anything that was officially done by the city. So I had to go to Cal Fire. I went to Cal Fire, and five years ago, there were 982 calls. It's 16, four years ago, 782, and in 19, 818. And so the significant increase, increased dramatically, was 4%, 4.6%, 30% over that. That's a dramatic increase. But the amount of money that you got increased by 12.5%. And I don't recall, and I don't know what you're going to do with any of this stuff, with this per call, but if you only get 10 calls, is your cost going to go down lower than $2.007? I don't think so. It's not cost by call, but that's okay. That's not important. It's important to say these things and mislead the people, I think. And one of the programs was done in Marietta, and they were gone. And this is a cost recovery program, I think, that you call it. Your cost for last year, from what I understand, is $1.007, although your budget was $2.002. So you're $500,000 to the good. So now, if you implemented this program, you're going to give back money to the people because you gained $500,000. You gained one. Your income is $2,100,000 a year and going up on a regular basis. And if your costs were $2.002, the difference is $200,000. You're going to go through this effort for $200,000 when you can get $250,000 by a one-point increase in UUT. If you're going to do it, do it right, and don't mislead the people, especially when you can't and won't produce documents that show what's going on.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Nancy Horton.
When first this was brought up, there were a couple of things that were discussed. The first one was that there was going to be a consultant who would figure out how you would set the fees. That there would be somebody, some company, that would do some due diligence and figure out how the fees are going to be set and so on. I still think it's a little ridiculous to go through this process and not tell anybody what the fees are going to be because that's going to determine whether people are really going to be in it or not in it. If it's $500, they may not. If it's $100, they may. So this is, when people hear this and they say, "Well, you've passed this," the first thing they're going to say is, "Well, how much is it going to cost? So I'd like to know." When are we going to know? And have you engaged a consultant who will be working with residents to find out what their expectations would be? That's my question.
Thank you. I think we've discussed that, and perhaps to the city manager, would I take the opportunity to tell them what we're doing?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Our study was done several years back by a company called Titler Vice that looked at feasibility of an EMS subscription program. Staff has reviewed that study in depth. It is badly needed updating. It does not take into consideration the approach the city is currently suggesting. We've reached out to Titler Vice. They've indicated they'd be happy to update the study for us. So should the council decide to move forward with this ordinance tonight, the next step for us on this program would be to contract with that company and have them update the study.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed.
Lastly, we have Jack Wamsley.
Good evening. Well, I'm looking at this volunteer emergency medical service. And I think a comment from one of our council members said, I do not want to raise a tax. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a tax. I don't care what you call it. It's a tax. You're taxing the people to say, hey, if you want service, this is what it's going to cost you. The other thing that you completely forgot is the cities that you're looking at that have this have huge populations compared to us. They can get by by only having probably 70% of the people enjoying, are joining in on this emergency type service. Our, our city, we have about 5,000, as far as 5,000 homes, if that goes. And if you only get about 70% of them, you're going to have one hell of a cost for those people to cover the other people that no one pays. The other people are going to, if you think everybody's going to sign up for this emergency thing voluntarily, you're wrong. They're not going to ever, I don't know what percentage it is right now. I'm hoping that you people would look it up. But anyway, I know that Marietta is not even close to 100% of the people signing up for their emergency service. And if I just took myself, for 30 years, I've used the emergency service twice. I'm better off than not even signing up and pay the big shot when it comes. But it's a tax. You can call it anything you want to. It's a tax. You're already taxing the people, but it's equal. Everybody's paying the same thing. So if you have to increase that a little bit, increase it and everybody will have the same increase. I think I pay about $15 a month or something like that. I don't mind an increase to cover the fire service. I enjoy having a good fire service and we do have a good fire service. But if you think that AMR is going to cover you, I don't want AMR coming without the fire department. I want both coming. And many times, and you don't see this in a report. All you see is the medical response. You don't see this as to what actually takes place. Sometimes it'll take four people to get a person out of the house. Sometimes it'll take more than that. Sometimes you got a drug problem, and I can remember being on a sign, I know Larry can refer to this. I was on a drug problem. It took two policemen and three firemen to hold the guy down. So you really can just increase our tax just a little bit on what we're doing and gain the funds that you need. Anyway, that's my comment. I think I probably ran over my three minutes.
I'll tell you if you didn't. Thank you.
We do have one more card. Travis Montgomery.
I just want to make sure that I understand what's happening based on the comments made by Jack Wamsley. No one signs up for this program. Everybody in the city is automatically enrolled. You un-sign up. You have to take the affirmative action not to be involved. But contrary to other cities where it's a voluntary program where you go down and sign up, as I did in Big Bear, here, everybody, am I correct, is automatically enrolled in the program? And you only get out of the program by signing a document and submitting it to the city clerk?
Is she here to answer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So the city looked at a number of other cities that have these types of programs. The one that we found was probably our best model was Norco for a number of reasons. One, like us, they don't currently have their own fire department. They contract with the county. Two, they also do an opt-out program, which is similar to what we're recommending. We had a lengthy conference call with their finance department, which runs this program. Every city that we talked to who has this program said it was fantastic. Even Marietta, who no longer has the program. I spoke with their city manager. We met on this topic. I spoke with one of their council members. They wish that they hadn't gotten rid of the program, but they passed a significant sales tax a few years ago. And part of the deal they made with the residents at that time was, hey, look, if you pass the sales tax, we'll get rid of the EMS subscription. So that's why that program went away, not because it wasn't working well for them, quite the opposite. Norco has a 93% participation in their, in their program. I was surprised by that. I would not want to get your hopes up that we will be that high. But across the board, the cities that we talked to that have these programs reported positive results.
Since I raised the question, may I just get it clarified? I think we're parsing words here. The city manager said this is an opt-out program. Am I correct with a yes or no that everybody is automatically enrolled? And you only become un-enrolled if you take a positive action to do so?
I think you're correct.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as proposed, Mr. Montgomery's correct, that this ordinance anticipates that everyone would be enrolled automatically unless they opt out. The city of Norco shared with us not only the details of the program, but also forms that they use, which is fantastic. One of the forms that they shared with us was a mailer that they send out annually that details how the program works. And there's a little tear-off on the bottom that people can fill out and send in if they wish to opt out. So we would anticipate something along those lines.
Okay, thank you.
I have no more cards.
Thank you. Okay, I think we all need a motion on this.
I have a few questions, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Just very quickly. Last council meeting, it was directed by multiple peoples in the public to have the opportunity for this ordinance to be set up to the community. And I think in doing that, it was in the Friday flyer for front page. I know it was on social media. So my question to the city staff is, is in that time, it's been over, it's been a month now, has there been any phone calls from the community? Has there been any emails? Has there been anyone stopping by to discuss this program that you can tell us about?
I have not received any correspondence on this item. I'd like to ask the city clerk if we've received any correspondence.
The city clerk's office has not received any official correspondence in regards to this item.
My second question is to my colleagues. As you know, we took it upon ourselves to make this as transparent as possible. In doing so, we created this as a business item instead of on the consent calendar. Did any of my colleagues here get any comments, any concerns, any issues from any of their close friends, constituents in the community on this ordinance?
I can answer that. I've had multiple conversations with neighbors, members of organizations I belong to, and just kind of unofficially polled people in businesses in the town center. Overwhelmingly, the response that I got sounded positive, that people were in favor of not having an across-the-board tax, that people were not in favor of having the UUT raised when individuals could be responsible for their own medical costs. So the response that I got was in favor.
Anyone else?
No, I think I had one question about it.
Due to the Brown Act, you know, we have to discuss this amongst all of us. That's why I asked the question, because I wasn't able to call each of you to talk about this. The other and last question that I want to, want to ask, just for point of clarification, Mr. City Attorney, we're adopting this ordinance as a shell program. This allows us to do the research and analysis to find out exactly what we're getting ourselves into. Tonight, we are passing that ordinance to move forward with the study and research of that. We're still going to be bringing back what we find from that study, which ultimately will be a fee that we will be applying to our residents.
That's correct. So, you know, when we're looking at what the amount of the fee should be, we have to look at what the expected participation rate is going to be. And so we need to know what the structure of the program is going to be for the city manager and any consultants that he needs to do to effectively study the program and bring back a recommended fee level for you. Obviously, the higher the participation level within the community, the lower the fee is going to be for those who choose to participate. So there are still going to be many future actions that this council's going to have to take before any person is able to participate in the program. This is the first step.
Thank you for making that point of clarification. Based upon that facts alone, I move forward on business item number nine, that we adopt tonight ordinance number 187.
I have one second, Ed.
We have a motion in a second. And we're quite busy with roll call votes tonight.
Councilmember Bonner?
We love them all. Aye.
Mayor Pacham Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Kranz?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the second reading of ordinance number 187, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Canyon Lake, California, establishing an emergency medical services subscription program and emergency medical services response fee.
Thank you. We move on to item number 10. And I think you get to introduce this one.
Yes, thank you. Staff is really excited to bring this item forward tonight. This is going to be the approval of resolution number 2019-43, approving a military banner policy. When I first started working for the city of Canyon Lake, I asked who was in charge of the military banners. And I was told that the Veterans Day Committee was in charge of them. However, it appeared that the banners had not been maintained. We had really no program in place. This program was established in 2014 and really there had been no revisions to the current banner program. So staff went through and we revised the application with the help of our WRCO fellow, Megan. She really worked really hard on this. So we went through, we revised the policy. We put together a brand-new application, a brand-new design. And with the help of our admin services manager, Mike Orha, we came up with this brand-new design. If I can have everybody turn back here. Mike spent a lot of time on this military banner, designing it and trying to make both the city manager and myself happy. We didn't always agree on the design, but he spent a lot of time on it. And so we came up with this design that we're very happy with. And we're hoping that the city council will approve this policy and we can put it into place. So one of the things that this policy does is that it essentially takes the banner program away from the veterans committee and it gives it to staff. The city clerk's office is happy to kind of oversee this program and run it and work with the families. And, you know, we're happy, I'm happy to make sure that all of our veterans are honored. And that's all I have for you tonight.
That's a terrific banner. Very nice. Council, have any questions?
Hi. I was present at the Veterans Day Committee on the evening that this was discussed. And overwhelmingly, the support of the Veterans Day Committee in the city taking over this program was present. I think that it's an excellent idea to make sure that there is a regularly scheduled maintenance because obviously, we don't want to dishonor any of our veterans by having destroyed or shabby banners. So I think this is an amazing, an amazing idea and I am very much in favor of it.
I did have one comment. I noticed in the staff report, it said that, as I always ask in funding, that funding is provided for these banners with our private donations. So the community is chipping in and we are delivering the banners, which I think is a salute to all those who have served or who are serving. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing that I do want to point out is that there was some concern with the cost of putting the banners up on the poles because the city doesn't have, you know, the proper equipment. So what we came up with is that we would do installations twice a year. We would do it before Veterans Day and before Memorial Day. And what we'd like to do and what's outlined in the policy is that we would hold a special city council meeting and we would have those families come and take pictures with the council and present to them their banners and have them take pictures with their banners and just really make it all about them and honoring the veterans and their family members and, you know, all of our, the residents here in the community. So I think that's one kind of cool feature about this policy.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to say thank you so much. This is so huge. It's personal to me because my brother is in the Navy. So I get to see him leave and he's gone for nine months at a time. And my sister's alone and it's a lot. But Nancy, I want to say thank you for sharing that story. I think a lot of us forget, we do our day-to-day tasks and we forget that our men and women are out there and they're away from their families. And we're blessed to go home to ours every night. So for me, this is, you know, an emotional thing, but at the same time, extremely exciting. And, you know, this is, this is exactly the things that we love to do. So congratulations to the staff and all the work and all of Nancy's folks that are helping put out those flags. And, you know, I think we're just doing the right thing as a community and it's pretty special.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2019-43. One second, Ed.
We have a motion in a second. Well, I guess once again, are there any public comments on this item?
I have no cards.
Okay, good.
See what we're starting to learn, Mr. Mayor.
I got in trouble early on, so you know, I have learned. Okay, once again.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Pacham Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Kranz?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve resolution number 2019-43.
Thank you. Okay, I think the city manager gets to introduce this next resolution.
Yes, sir, thank you. So as you know, the city continues to explore different options in terms of public safety and the costs that are associated with providing public safety throughout the city. Back in 2017, nine cities got together and they went in together and they consulted with a company called Matrix Consulting Group to do a feasibility study on what it would look like if they formed a joint powers authority to provide police services for those nine cities. At that time, the city of Canyon Lake opted not to participate in that effort. In recent months, some of those cities have decided that they want to take another look. Really, nothing was done with that original study. It sat on the shelf. But as costs have gone up for everyone, the world has changed. Some cities are saying, no, we really need to look at this seriously. So seven of those cities recently, seven of the original nine cities said, okay, let's, let's update this study. Let's get together and let's, let's change the scope just a little bit. Let's not just look at a JPA, but let's also look at our relationship with the sheriff's department. We have a new sheriff, a new administration. We know that administration is looking for ways to better partner and contract cities. So maybe we can have a study that also looks at how we might alter that relationship with the sheriff's department in a way that is more tailored to each community. It might be a better financial home. The cities that are currently looking at that are the cities of Peruba Valley, Lake Elsinore, Reno Valley, San Jacinto, Temecula, and Wildomar. Had a good meeting with the city manager of Lake Elsinore a couple of weeks ago. This topic came up. And it was discussed that this might be a good time for the city of Canyon Lake to reevaluate whether it makes sense for us to join in this effort. Given that we continue to struggle with these issues and our costs have gone up, you know, our, our cost for providing police services has gone up 49% in the last six years for the, for the same service level. There are other options that we're considering. The city of Memphis is in the process of starting their police department. There might be an option there for us at some point in the future. But our portion of this would be pretty small. This study is estimated at $126,000. Our portion of that would be $15,804. In addition, this, this new company, Citygate Associates, that will be doing this study, will start with the study that was done with Matrix as a, as a base. And then they will update that and expand from there. that and expand from there. So, the City of Canyon Lake will get the benefit of that original study, which we didn't pay into, in addition to the benefit of the new study. You know, we're awfully focused on fire right now, and we're not wanting to get too distracted from that, but we do know that we're going to have to address the police side as well at some point. And so, I think, you know, it probably makes sense that we get as much information as we can. I think this is a cost-effective way to do it, and then we have options when the time comes. So, staff's recommendation is that we, that the council authorized staff to join with the other cities involved to enter into an agreement to study the feasibility of JPA for police services.
Thank you. Counsel, have any questions in the staff?
I have one comment, which I think it's appropriate, that we enter in to show that, you know, we want to be part of a partnership with our surrounding communities from a cooperative standpoint, which kind of in the past, due to circumstances, we didn't participate in a lot of things. I think most of the cities that I've had contact with, some of them are listed, have very similar concerns than we do. I believe, as the city manager pointed out, this not only gives us a chance to look at maybe another way of approaching police services, but it also gives us another option if the City of Menifee, for instance, they go live July 1. We've had good discussions with them, but we don't know what the costs are yet. So, it just gives us, let's say, a little bit better view of what we're going to be approaching if we decide to go that way, and with the sheriff being involved, that's even another plus, because up to date, we've pretty much been told this is the way it is, and that's why our costs have gone up. So, I think it's a good approach for us.
Thank you. And I certainly can agree. It seems to me you mentioned that in 2017, we were approached to do this, but I recall earlier attending a meeting in Temecula for this JPA, which at the time, I had recommended to the council that we should go forward with this, but for some reason, I don't think they all agreed with me at the time. But I certainly think this is the time now to enter into this, and as Councilman Greaves said, it shows a little unity on our part as well in all of our surrounding cities. I think it's pretty important that we do this. That's the end of Mike on it. Before we go any further, I'm going to ask if there's any public comments on this item.
Yes, Jack Quansley.
First of all, I'm glad to see you trying the JPA. When we first started the city, I started on the first city council, when we tried to start a JPA, we were not successful, because we couldn't get anybody interested in it. And we, our first police, the protection for the City of Canyon Lake came from Paris. And for the first few years, the Paris was our police department, and then Paris went with the counties, so we were forced to go there. And having worked in a JPA for 13 years in the fire service at Downey and Huntington Park and Southgate and so on, the JPA works very well, as long as all of these surrounding cities will agree and sit down and go over the issues. And I think Larry Green's already talked to them about the fire department JPA, and I don't know what has transpired on that, but anyway, I think it would work good both ways. But I'm glad to see you do it, and it's worth the effort. Hope we can come out financially.
Thank you. Okay, we're into that. Thank you for the motion.
I'll make a move to approve of the motion number 219-44.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Before the roll call vote, I just wanted to give a shout-out to our city manager. One of the biggest things, and you both have mentioned this, is regional relationships. And if it wasn't for Chris reaching out to the city of Lake Elsinore city manager and sitting down with him, having these discussions, we would never be here tonight with the opportunity to actually do something with our neighboring city. So, I just want to applaud not only this council, but our staff as well, who's working so hard at trying to build relationships with our sister cities. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. This may be the last roll call vote.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Kranz?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve resolution number 2019-44.
Thank you. Okay. Guess I need to turn the page. Oh, no, I was wrong. There's more, I'm going to go wrong. I apologize. There's more roll call votes. Item number 12.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Currently, the city's municipal code requires that the city council directly appoint the city manager, the city attorney, the city clerk, and the city treasurer. Currently, as has been the practice of the council, the city manager is also appointed to serve as the city clerk and the city treasurer. Our current practice is that the city manager then hires a deputy city clerk, who in practice runs the day-to-day functions of the city clerk's office. We have a deputy city clerk currently, who has been going through the process of getting a certification that will enable her to be a full-fledged city clerk, which is what caused us to look at this section of the municipal code and look at best practices here. We're recommending changes that bring this code in line with actual practices of the city. In actual practice, the city council appoints the city manager and the city attorney, but all their staff work under the city manager. And so, we're recommending that we change the municipal code to reflect that, and that is what is before you this evening.
Chris, have we ever had a city treasurer?
Well, no, I've only been here eight months, but not in the past eight months. The city manager, that being myself, is the city treasurer, so technically, I am the city treasurer, and then we have a finance director, who is Terry Shea.
Well, I knew that.
Any questions from the staff?
I move that we adopt the ordinance number 12. It's number 188.
I second.
You're hitting ahead of me each time, Counsel. First, I have to ask if there's any public comments on this.
I have no cards.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. Okay. Now, we will accept your motion, and I won't have you repeat it. I lost my place there, I was on the wrong page. Another roll, another roll call vote.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Kranz?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 188, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake, amending chapters 2.04 and 2.08 of the municipal code related to the positions of city clerk and city treasurer.
Okay, thank you. Item number 13.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Currently, the city does not track which properties are occupied by renters. In an attempt to be responsive to community concerns regarding illegal activity and nuisance behaviors...
Sorry, city manager, one second, please. If there were any city council members who felt that they needed to inflict off this item because of their business relationships, I feel it might be appropriate for them to do so before the discussion on the item began.
Yes, I'd be one of them.
Sorry to interrupt the meeting.
No, thank you.
Thank you. As I was saying, in an attempted responsive to community concerns regarding illegal activity and nuisance behaviors that sometimes come with rental properties, staff is suggesting that the city consider implementing a program to register and inspect single-family residential rentals and to require a crime-free lease addendum, obligating renters to agree to live a crime-free lifestyle. This program is similar to that of a number of cities in the region. In particular, this draft ordinance most closely resembles that of the City of Eastvale. Rental homes are generally believed to be responsible for a disproportionate share of code enforcement and police calls for service. Illegal activity and nuisance behaviors interfere with the health, safety, quality of life, quiet enjoyment, and general welfare of those residing near rental homes, and may contribute to decline in the value of surrounding properties. I'm going to turn this over now to the city attorney to lead us through the specifics of this ordinance, and then we'll take questions. I'd like to point out that we're bringing this before you this evening for discussion only. We're not asking for any action tonight. We want to, we're going to get your thoughts, get feedback, get community input, and then we anticipate incorporating that input and bringing it back to you for consideration in December.
City manager, mayor, members of the council, what you have before you today is essentially what I would call a model code. So, this is a template ordinance that we are using based off of one of our sister cities here in Riverside County that has a very successful program. It's composed of essentially three elements that addresses issues that cities have with single-family rentals within their community. So, the first issue, and this is mostly the identification of what houses within our community are single-family rentals, so that the remainder of the regulations can be put into effect. So, that requires registration with the City of Canyon Lake. The way we are going to establish that there's a rebuttable presumption, that means absent any other evidence, we're going to assume that you are, in fact, operating as a single-family rental, is the failure to have filed a homeowner's exemption on your property. And to all those out there, if you are living in your home, free legal advice on behalf of the city, file your homeowner's exemption. But that will be our preliminary basis, using records, public records, accounting, to determine initially which properties within our community are likely being used as single-family rentals and which ones are likely owner-occupied. It would require that any person who is renting residential property in the community designate a local contact representative. This is best practice throughout a number of communities, and when they're regulating their rental programs, is they want to have somebody who's close by, within 50 miles of the jurisdiction, who can respond in a timely manner if the community has concerns with the house, and to prevent absentee landlords who aren't in the intention of the property in the community. As I said, there's a registration program. It will be pretty straightforward and relatively painless, we hope, but it's simply to identify, you know, where the property is, who the local contact representative is, and to make sure that they're complying with the other requirements of this portion of the code and the other portions of the code. It's non-transferable to new owners, and any person who fails to register, we are going to register you on your behalf and send you the bill for the registration fee. There will also be a requirement that if a new occupant comes into the, comes into the community at the property that they notify the city. So, that's the registration program. It's essentially trying to keep track of where the single-family rentals are, who's responsible for them, and making sure that they are complying with the other divisions of our code. The second part of the ordinance you have in front of you is a crime-free lease addendum. So, think about the crime-free lease addendum. It is a requirement that the city is putting on the people who are renting property within our community, but it's really a tool for that landlord. Oftentimes, what we have is we have landlords who are, you know, small business owners, they're not necessarily sophisticated, they're using form leases for these purposes, and when they have a troubled tenant that is going to get them in trouble with our code, they have difficulty in securing evictions. So, what we have here is we have foreign language. They need to have language that's substantially in that form. They don't have to copy verbatim, but this is to ensure that they have the tools available to them to remove criminal elements that are causing public nuisances within the community. Because one of the things that's going to happen is the city's going to approach the property owner and the local contact representative and say, we have an issue at this property that we would like you to handle. We don't want them to be in a position where they say, I don't have the lease language I need to secure eviction to comply with the code. So, this is a tool for those property owners. The last, the third prong of the program that we have before you is an inspection program. So, similar to our multifamily and commercial life safety inspections, we are going to be having inspections upon annually and change in tenants. However, keeping in mind that we have several long-term tenants within our community, we have several landlords who do a very good job at keeping their properties in good repair and safe condition, there is an incentive for those landlords who have that long-term tenant who are members of the community, and for those landlords who do a good job, to self-certify. So, if they go through that initial inspection, they make any necessary corrections, a landlord may submit an application to self-certify, and then they would go into the self-certification program, which means we're not going to have to go out there every year, and more to the point, they're not going to have to pay for inspection. So, it's really an incentive for landlords to keep their properties in good condition and an incentive for them to have those long-term members of our community who are renting. There are allowances here for fees. The registration fees anticipate to be relatively low, because we're talking about filling out a form roughly one page and turning it into the city. There will be an allowance for fees to be set for the annual inspection if necessary. There are sections within here for appeals. If there are any concerns, first can appeal to the city manager. And then, finally, we did look at the allowance for complaint-based inspections. We didn't want this, the provision of this code to in any way inhibit code enforcement from doing their job if they receive complaints. And then, we also allowed if somebody wants to do a voluntary inspection, they're absolutely permitted, if a tenant wanted the city to come out there and do that, we could do that. And then, lastly, just the standard enforcement sections regarding violations identified and penalty fees. So, the intent here is to make sure we're having quality housing stock throughout the community, that the housing stock we have is maintained, that property owners are responsive to the requirements of the city in the same way that those who are here every day have to deal with as well. So, that's the presentation on the draft program. Any feedback is appreciated.
Thank you. Okay. I got feedback. Who wants to go? Counsel, Castillo, head or head up first?
I'm in favor of this. I think that there is something to be said for treating landlord or landlords as business owners. I know that we have a lot of in-home-based business, and I don't see how this is any different. I also want to make sure that whatever we put into effect rewards landowners and landlords who encourage long-term tenants, because those people are vested community members, they vote, they partake in all of our community events. But I also want to make sure that we can potentially, on the flip side of this, discourage short-term rentals. There's been an outcry in our community about short-term rentals. They're prohibited by the POA, they still are there. I think if we can work something into this that dissuades short-term rentals, specifically transient occupancy taxes and the like, I think that that would be something that not only would be good for the community, but good for the POA, good for the city.
Mayor, if I may, I have a question on the council member. What were the specific concerns that you're hearing about short-term rentals? Because I have dealt with short-term rentals in many other communities, which I served as a hearing officer for the City of Anaheim, and theirs. Is it, there's usually different kinds, there's maybe like the summer vacation, but there's also the party house on the weekend?
Right, there's both of those. And if you, if you talk to the members of the community, you will know that, and my, this is my understanding only, that they're blanket prohibited by the POA, yet they pop up. I think at last count, there was over 100 of them. They're unregulated. There's obviously no transient occupancy tax, which, if this is going to be something that is allowed in the community, we should be making sure that there is regulation. I don't think that the community wants that. And so, I do think that if, if what we're talking about is inspections, every time you have a new tenant, that would be these people who come, you know, for the weekend. Big concern is that we are having people in our community who do not care about our amenities, who do not care about the disturbing of the peace of the neighbors, because they're just here to use our beach and leave. So, if we can formulate something that addresses that in line with what the intent of this policy is, I think that that would be something that would be welcomed by the community.
Understood. I would say, generally speaking... I would say generally speaking, many cities, obviously these are two complementary issues, but they might have a separate ordinance on each one. I have a model ordinance for short-term rentals as well.
And I don't mean to interrupt you, but can we incorporate that? Because if we are talking about inspection per tenant, that is necessarily going to encompass those?
Absolutely. That was going to be the question I had for you. Would it be the preference of the council that we incorporate those standard short-term rental requirements that are found in other communities? You're paying the TOT a minimum number of days, maximum number of people, parking has to be onsite. These are the same things now.
Well, but we're going to have to consult with what is in our rules and regs by the POA. As far as I'm understanding, they're prohibited. So I want, I want to make sure that anything that we legislate is going to be consistent with what is in place and what is desired by the property owners in the community in the private section of the city.
So the way to do that would be to prohibit tenancies of less than 30 days within the single-family residential zone. So, you know, that would allow month-to-months to continue, but it would effectively prohibit short-term rentals.
Right.
That being said, I think we'd also put language in there that says, notwithstanding the fact that this is prohibited, you still have to pay your taxes.
Correct. No, and then that's what I would like.
Those are two separate issues.
I would like that involved, because if we are going to be utilizing code enforcement for these inspections, you know, that is something that we're going to be spending manpower on, so.
If it's currently prohibited by the POA guidelines, regulations, and if the council wanted to direct staff to include a similar prohibition under the city's municipal code for those activities, we can absolutely add that to this ordinance as well.
My turn? Yes, council. Okay, a couple of things I think that we need to take into consideration is because of the changes in the HCD requirements, and that references residential zones and group housing. And group housing can be two to seven, over seven, they have to have a conditional use permit. But we do have folks that have large homes that may live in one quarter of it, and the rest are renting out with two to three people. And does this address that?
So as it is stated now, yes.
Okay.
The question that you may want to give, or the issue that you may want to give direction to staff on is we can treat owner-occupied differently for some purposes than when the landlord is not at the premises. So if that's something that's important to you, so for example, if you wanted to change the inspection requirements for owner-occupied rentals, we can absolutely incorporate that as well.
Sure. I just think that if we're going after the rentals, then we have to look at everything that's being rented in the lake and the ones that should be prohibited. I think that it's a good way, because I think these, these properties are going to just increase in the future, because there's a lot of changes going on. And I happen to see several places in my neighborhood that what I described as a, I wouldn't call them a group home, but because they're falling under the numbers that we would have today, but obviously they're renting and have quite a few renters within the same roof, so we obviously need to address that. Even though maybe the person is getting their homeowner's exemption, and they're just maximizing garage, which they're totally out of compliance of the code, they're totally out of compliance with the zoning, because R1 is designed for a single-family, not multiple occupancy, it's not in R2 or 3 or 4. And so I think those are things that we need to incorporate, because those are the things we're going to encounter.
So would the direction be to make sure that we clarify?
Yes.
That when you're renting out a portion of the structure, you count as a rental?
Absolutely.
Yes, Councilman Bonner?
We had a three or four micro combination of questions that they was, is it, is it reactive, react, or active, you know, retroactive? Does it go back to, when we approve this program, okay, now we go people that are already, well, go fall into this category now?
So as a, as a general rule, the city's prohibited from implementing retroactive laws. So this would be on a go-forward basis, so you'd be required to register on a go-forward basis, you would be required to get the annual inspections on a go-forward basis, and you'd be required to notify the city of a new tenant on a go-forward basis. Everything here anticipates going forward.
Okay. I just want to clarify, because I think I understand also what you're asking to. So if someone is a tenant currently at a home, is that person subject to inspection all of a sudden, or is, will it, will it start when the property is next rented to the next document?
If we go forward with the language we have here, which combines both annual inspections and change in occupancy inspections, they would, if the occupant remained, then they would be subject to inspection at the next annual inspection date.
Excuse me? Councilman Bonner?
So.
Can we just hold it up for a moment? We have a council member that can't hold his thoughts for just a moment. Can we take a five-minute break?
Better call a meeting back to order. Announce the time, please.
I will do that. We're going to reconvene this meeting at 8:59, calling it back to order. Sorry for, we have, we have to follow procedures to the T, you know. Overwhelming the audience.
This would go pretty fast. On the middle of 231, I saw, it should say occupants, plural occupants, I think that what Larry was talking about, is like in our total set, we had a home that has from four to eight people, different rooms in the house.
I'm sorry, Councilman, what page are you on?
231.
You think, you'd like the definition of occupant or tenant to be plural as well?
May plural.
Okay.
All right, then the next one is, it says the following are not considered single-family realm, residential property, and you say the mobile park, home parks, okay?
Yes.
I think that's too broad. I mean, because I think there's in, in our park, our mobile park, there's people that are fit in that category.
The reason mobile home parks are exempted is because mobile home park law is, gets a little complicated and might overburden the ordinance. So for example, you know, how people occupy a space in a mobile home park, oftentimes they don't own the space, perhaps they own the mobile home itself, but they pay space rent. And so the intention on exempting mobile home parks from the definition was simply to keep the ordinance manageable, but if we wanted to include mobile home parks in here, we could, it would require significant additional research on how exactly that would apply to those.
I'm just saying that I think there's going to be in, in our mobile, there's going to be people that are in that category.
Got you.
Okay, so that's what we're, okay. And then on, on 232, it says there may be contact within 50 miles of Canyon Lake City Home. By 50 miles, 50 miles isn't very far. There's some people that don't, you know, the owners are not, are the only ever content within 50 miles of Canyon Lake.
So if the owner does not themselves live within 50 miles of the city of Canyon Lake, they would be obligated to designate a local contact representative. The intention is for that exact thing to occur. We want a property management company or an individual who is capable of responding to the property in a timely manner when issues arise.
Okay, well, you might get pushback from people in public that own property and they don't live in more than 50 miles of Canyon Lake, and they don't want to have a management company.
So I can tell you that most of these cities that I see with similar ordinances to this or with vacant building ordinances which have similar provisions, usually it's 40 miles. This was increased to 50 miles. If the council believes that it should be a larger distance or it should not, that section should not be required at all, you can give that direction and we can remove it.
Well, I would, I would like to see more than 50 miles, but I don't know what the rest of the council thinks.
My thought on that is if the whole point is to make sure that the owner of the property is engaged, so the property doesn't become some blighted, vacant, horrible thing. I'm not like.
You think 50 miles would make a difference?
Well, I would expect that they would hire a property management company if they were too far to come and check regularly on their house. I mean, if, I don't own a rental property, but if I did, I could tell you that I would know what was going on with my property.
All right, that's all. I, I am in concurrence with the 50 mile, just because it gives us a little control as far as having someone or something doesn't need to be a contact if we encounter a problem. And as an example, we have some property owners that live in China, there's no way that they're managing their property in China.
No, but they live in Southern California.
So I, and I would think it would be even difficult if the guy lived in San Fernando Valley to get here in a reasonable time. So I think the reasons they put mileage on it is to put the onus on the owner, to have either that person or someone that they designate as a contact.
So, well, for the council, whatever they want, but I think 50 miles is enough. But I've said my piece.
Okay, any public comments on this?
We did have two cards. Mr. Travis Montgomery withdrew his request, and Ms. Nancy Horton apparently has gone home, so no cards.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, we heard enough information on this that I don't think there's a motion or a second needed on this.
No, this was mostly just to get the sense of the council. We're trying to make sure that when we bring ordinance, ordinances to the council, that we have an idea of the pulse of the council. So the feedback that we received has been to include the express prohibition on short-term rentals, to be consistent with POA regulations, to ensure that people are paying TOT even if those are prohibited, to ensure that the ordinance is directed not just at entire structures, but also portions of structures that are being rented out, to make sure that occupants and tenants is plural, because there are situations where that occurs. So that's the feedback that we received from council members Castillo. So if, as long as that's the general sense of the council, we don't need a vote or specific direction. We'll be bringing back an ordinance for first reading at a future date that will hopefully address the concerns of our race. So thank you, Councilman Bonner, and Councilman Castillo, and honorably.
Well, then I guess we can bring Councilmember Smith back in, wherever he may be hiding.
Yes, so if Councilman Smith and Mike Borah could make their way back, the next item is to be presented by Administrative Services Manager Mike Borah, so we'll have to wait for him to return.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have the next item presented by Mike Borah, Administrative Services Manager.
Good to know you're a city council. We're almost in.
All right.
Tonight's staff is bringing forward the, wrong page. Staff is recommending that city council adopt the plans and specifications for the Railroad Canyon Road wrought iron fence repair project phase two and award the contract to AB Fence Company Incorporated. So just a little history, so back in October 2018, a bid packet was put together from our previous folks with Charles Abbott and Associates. There were some issues of it not being as accurate as we wanted the project to be. At that time, council decided to pull that bid and bring it back with the corrections that were addressed by city council at that time. We made those corrections, we put this bid out to, on ActiveBitter, an online website service that we are now utilizing, and we received one bid, and that bid was from a company called AB Fence Company Incorporated for the amount of $161,444. Fortunately, it's the same company that actually did the phase one project for us before, so they're very familiar as to the specifics and the requirements that we're looking for our fence on Railroad Canyon Road. So with that being said, staff is recommending moving forward with awarding the construction contract for the Railroad Canyon Road wrought iron fence project phase two to AB's Fence Company Incorporated. I'm hoping for any questions.
Mayor?
Yes.
You used to be at phase two and phase three. Phase two and phase three, is it not consolidated just to phase two?
It is, yeah. I didn't, I'm not sure why it was going to be done that way, but we figured that it can be consolidated into one and just get the project over and done.
Yeah, when I was looking at the pictures, it didn't look like it was.
Yeah, so does it incorporate what have been phase two and three from the past?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, how much were the other bids?
Well, we only got one bid. See, the way ActiveBitter works is the contractors who are subscribed to ActiveBitter, they place their bid, and it only shows up what the lowest bid was.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, so basically that was the lowest bid for, for, that was.
And actually worked out, because they've already done business with us before.
They have, yes.
So we, you know, perfect.
Yeah, I believe there were a total of two bids that we saw go up, but the ActiveBitter was definitely the lowest one, obviously. I'm sorry, the one for AB Fence Company.
Got it.
Any other questions? Assuming there's no public comments. Well, now, once again, we're, I want to get back on the right page, we need a motion and a second, and a roll call vote.
I make a motion to award the contract for phase two of the wrought iron fence, bid number 201901. I second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor P. J. Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Pence?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve item number 14.
Okay, Mike, I think you get number 15 as well.
For this particular staff report here, council, staff is recommending to city council to authorize the city manager to enter into a service agreement and award Centec Group for the city's information technology support services. So our current IT services with Centec, I'm getting all these confused, Centec, ended in September of this year. Right now, we're currently just month-to-month with them, but at the same time, too, want to take advantage of maybe exploring some new services, maybe get some improvements in some of our customer service that, you know, has been lacking for quite some time, you know, maybe a couple of years. So we saw this as an opportunity, let's, let's put it out to bid, or I should say, an RFP out, to see what, what sort of response we got. We actually had a total of seven RFPs that responded. We actually had a total of seven RFPs that responded. Of the seven, we, we, between myself and city manager Chris Mann, we decided to interview the top three bids that we received. Syntec Group, Apex Technology, JR Tech, all locally companies that are relatively close to here, which is one important aspect that we wanted to have is have IT services that were close by. Basically, we interviewed all three candidates. We extensively looked at what we are looking to do currently and in the future. A big part of that is to migrate our, our current servers into the cloud and do away with the physical servers, and I think that's one big important aspect that we wanted to, to accomplish. In all the different, in all the different items that we looked at for each one, Syntec Group had all the checkmarks. Most importantly, they were the lowest one. And we felt that because of that, it made sense for us to move with them because of the additional things they're going to be looking into doing with regards to migrating to the cloud. So, so again, staff is recommending that city council authorize the city manager to enter into a service agreement and award Syntec's group for the city's information technology support services. Questions?
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 IT questions.
Long time coming, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, exhausting, yeah. Good work, guys.
I do have to ask, any public comments?
Have no public comments.
Thank you. I think that's enough. I still write through this. Okay, we need a motion and a second to approve item number fifteen.
Motion to approve item fifteen.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Castillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Cranz.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve item number fifteen.
Okay, I think we're in council comments or city manager comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Given that it's been a lot of.
Thirty seconds.
Trying to keep my comments under an hour. Just a few quick updates on things that staff has been working on. You may notice in front of you on these microphones, each one has a tag now. If you go to city hall, just about every piece of furniture and piece of equipment has a tag. Get onto the fire station, you'll see the same thing. Megan, our WRCO fellow, put in a lot of hours getting this asset inventory put together. Feel free to, to show it to anyone who actually wants to see it. You know, we have a spreadsheet that, that lists every little thing the city owns, so it's, it's long overdue. Now we just have to maintain it and keep it up. So that's, that's, that's good. Now that we have, that the council has approved the contract with Syntec, we're going to be moving to switch IT companies. That's, that's pretty important. We want to get that done quickly because we have a number of items that, that will rely on that. We'd like to migrate all of our data from the physical servers to, to a cloud-based system, so that, that's up next. Also, we have a revised proposal from Laserfish to, to digitize all of our files. Laserfish has come out with a cloud-based system that's actually less expensive, so we should be saving money there. All applicable departments in the city are now fully up and running with iWork. Program is functioning well for all of us now. It's been a heavy lift, but it's, we're, we're in good shape, in good shape there now. Staff evaluations will be done this month. That is, that's in process. We're, Mike Borah and I are working to get staff evaluations on a, on annual schedule where they happen every April. So we're doing evaluations now on people who haven't had them for some time, and then those people and everyone else will be evaluated again in April. And thereafter, we plan to do evaluations every April. What that allows us to do is incorporate any, you roll from the evaluation into recommendations for, if there are going to be salary increases, step increases, that sort of thing. We roll that into our budgeting cycle. So we did the evaluation since April, and then in May, we have our draft budget, and we adopt the budget in June. So should be a pretty efficient way of going about it. Enforcement staff have been attending training through the College of the Desert. When they're done with the training, they will be certified to be fire marshals. This is important because we're planning on starting our own life safety inspections early in 2020. In the building department, the budget remains under control. The last month where we have actual invoices from InnerWest was for the work they performed in August. In that month, revenue was $39,436. Our expenses, which are what we pay InnerWest for writing the service, were $37,857. So we're, we're now in the black by a little over $1,500 a month in the building department as opposed to being in the red about $15,000. So we've, that's, that's working well finally. Now, we're still hoping that we can get that 95% down significantly, and we'll be negotiating that soon with, with them. In the building department also, we feel that the quality of the service has been improving. It's been an adjustment when we did transition from Charles Abbott to InnerWest. Get everything dialed in just the, the way that we need, getting the right personnel there, getting the people who are working over there to understand the culture here in Canyon Lake and how services are expected to be provided. But I can tell you that the, the number of complaints we've been receiving are significantly down. I think I've only received one in the last thirty days or so. So I know Mayor Aaron Cranz is plugged in with a lot of the people who do business down there. Would you say that maybe complaints have, have reduced?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. Well, let us know if that, if that changes. Okay. Now, we also had some computer and phone issues down there that were resolved. We ended up having to hardwire our data network, which, as opposed to using wireless routers, and that, that solved our computer and phone problems, which also contributed to some of the service issues we're having. Calls not being returned properly and things like that, so much improved there. On the, the fire department front, we did receive a response from the county to, to the letter that we sent to them before the end of September. I actually don't have the physical letter yet, but we did receive kind of a, I don't know, was it, was it an email or a text from, from the county showing kind of the front page saying this, this, this is coming? The gist of it was, we, we can't agree to a cap, but we think we can give you a more realistic, a more accurate budget estimate, projections than we've been giving you. And we want to work with you. We want to continue the cooperative agreement, so let's, let's talk and let's see if we can work something out. That was the gist of, of the letter today's on. So we anticipate further discussions with the county in the next weeks or months. As I mentioned before, we plan to begin doing our own life safety inspections at the beginning of the year. Council's already adopted the fees associated with that. We, we anticipate now adopting the fire code next month, and we still need to work on adopting procedures and forms in order to launch the program in early 2020. We continue to work with the POA and AMR to try to find a deal to keep AMR inside the gates. In fact, we're having, we're having a next meeting. We had a recent meeting on that. We're having another one very soon. And we're hopeful that we'll be able to work a deal. Our WRCO intern Megan's next big project is to work with the rest of the staff to develop our diplomatic outreach program. As council has set as a major goal, improving regional relationships, and as we realize, because most of Canyon Lake is gated, a lot of our neighbors have never actually been inside the gates. We're working on a program to bring local elected officials and staff into the gates, show them what Canyon Lake's all about, drive-in tour, boat tour, showing them where some of our major projects are, showing them city hall, and discussing issues of mutual importance. Hope to have something for the council on that, a draft to look at at the, at the December meeting. We had a, we have three issues that have come up recently that will require staff to commit funds that will then have to come back for you, to you for budget adjustments. One of them is potentially fairly serious. We think we have it under control, but we received a letter a couple of weeks back from the Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board informing us that we have not complied with the requirement to implement a trash implementation plan, which is a requirement of our MS four permit. Apparently, that was due by November thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Between the transition between the former city manager and new city manager and Charles Abbott and Associates, which was handling it at the time, and, and InnerWest, that fell through the cracks. I became aware of it a couple of weeks ago when we got an email from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. We jumped right on it. Luckily, the, the board has been very understanding about our situation. We're going to have to commit funds to get this, this, that this plan put together very quickly. The thing with these sorts of issues is that the Regional Water Quality Control Board can be very punitive. They often issue fines, very hefty fines when you're, when you're not in compliance. We don't feel that we're in imminent danger of that. We think that they're understanding our situation, are going to work with us, but we have to move pretty quickly. So I may need to go ahead and commit funds to get, get these studied, get this, this plan done, and then come back to you afterwards to, you know, to say, look, this is what we did. I want to make sure you're okay with it. We also have run our course with Castaneda and Associates, who Ralph Castaneda is our consultant on the housing element. That contract is done now, but we still have some work that needs to be done on wrapping up the housing element work and also his assistance in applying for the grant funding we discussed earlier today. And so we received a revised bid from him in the amount of $9,000. It's within my spending authority, so I'm inclined to go ahead and approve the contract and then come back to you for a budget adjustment on that. And lastly, as I'm sure you've all seen, this year, we would really like to beef up our tree lighting ceremony. In fact, we're rebranding it as a winter wonderland and tree lighting ceremony. I'm sure you've all seen the, the flyer. We anticipate the budget being approximately $18,000, of which we're hoping to recoup a significant amount through sponsorships. In fact, Cole Huber has committed $1,500, and in return, we've promised to let him put a Cole Huber tree topper on top of the.
Unless someone donate something.
That sounds like a challenge. Terry Shea's firm has agreed to donate $1,000, and we still have a lot of phone calls to make, so we think we'll raise quite a bit of money, so it won't actually cost the city $18,000. But it's going to be a fantastic event for the community. It's really going to, I mean, we're going to have train rides and snow sledding and letters to Santa, a petting zoo, and Christmas tree giveaways, all kinds of fun things. So it should be a great, a great event for the community. We're doing it this year in conjunction with Canyon Lake Family Matters Club, so we're doing it together. We're happy to be joining with them, and should, should, should be great. Just a reminder, the Veteran, our Veterans Day event is on Monday. There's also a turkey drive November fourteenth from two to four o'clock at city hall. And I could keep talking for another hour, but I'm just gonna.
No, you can't.
I'm just gonna leave it there.
Thank you very much for your report. Councilmember Bonner.
I just want to say that Winter Wonderland is an incredibly good idea. When I, well, first got voted in, in 2010, was on the, on the flight, a flight pole in front of the city hall. And it went to the memorial, but this is a really good movement in the right direction. Thank you for all, the staff has done an incredibly good job putting that all together. Just really quickly, I went to the RCDC meeting, and we had two four-hour meetings, two twice, and Supervisor Jeffrey's particular was insisting that just converting HOV's to total planes doesn't increase the capacity. So he finally, we got, I would say about three-fourths of the people voted with support with Jeffrey's, and we're, we're not going to move it forward until we get CalTran to find out what they're going to do to increase the capacity. And so I think that was a good move. I went to a less water meeting, and it was a really good meeting. I went to the Animal Friends of the Valley JPA, and also I talked to the, our representative that comes to this council meeting, and they said they were between two people. They were going to switch between the two of them to be out of the city council. So did they get an announcement this, this time? It was today? Do they, did, did Animal Friends of the Valley?
Yeah, they, they were informed that we, are you asking if they were informed about tonight's council meeting?
Yeah, did they get an announcement that they were.
Oh, absolutely, yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll follow up and find out because.
Yeah, they were notified and they did respond to us, and they said that they didn't have somebody available to attend the meeting, but they would be emailing us the stats. Last month, we didn't hear from them, so at least going forward, we'll start receiving the statistics and we can provide them to the council. They just weren't available to attend.
Okay, and then the last, the last thing on the roundtables, Monday is Veterans Day, so we're not going to have the normal on the second Monday. So on Tuesday, the twelfth, will be the economic roundtable, and then on November fourteenth, at the Hunter Club, will be the, the city POA law enforcement in the water district. That's all. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Castillo.
I just will keep it short. I wanted to say thank you very much to staff for working with the Family Matters Club on the Winter Wonderland event. I know that staff had already made a lot of plans and had put a lot of things into, into the works before the partnership commenced, but I think this is a great idea. And I think we're really going to benefit for them from the collaboration, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Green?
Well, welcome to all. My, my report is so short that I will not comment on anything.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Yes, just real quick for the record, on item number thirteen, the reason why I had to leave was just for a business conflict of interest, so I just wanted that for the record. But it's been an extremely busy couple of months, as most of us know. Just a couple of things I want to report on. RCA, we sent about a few of our good folks to DC, and they were able to advocate for not only here in Riverside County, but some of the projects that we're working on. In regards to Riverside Transportation Agency, I was really excited to, to kind of tip off RTA, there was, as most of you know, a big fire in Haruba Valley. And there were senior citizens that were on the side of the road, and they had no way to get transportation to one of the relief places. So I was able to contact our director and say, are we going to provide buses? And they sent out eight buses to pick up senior citizens, and was able to provide that service, and they're already in about twenty or thirty minutes. So it's pretty phenomenal when you pay attention and you're, you know, is it actually a colleague out in that area that asked, and we were able to relay that message. So that's what's exciting about some of these regional things that we get to work on. Most of us here, I know that Jordan, Casey, myself, we went to the league. A lot of good things happening, a lot of great information, you know, ideas that are coming forth that we're trying to pay attention to and put Canyon Lake in the right direction. But it's been a long evening, so I'm gonna, that's all, that's all I have to say for the night. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to keep it as short as possible as well. I'm glad you mentioned the league. It was, it was a great convention, and I can always is. A lot of walking for some of us, but we made it, we got through it pretty well. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, and I had two WRCO meetings since the last city council meeting, and I can provide more information at, at another time. I did have the fortune, good fortune, of going to the Medify City Hall ribbon-cutting ceremony, and it was quite nice. It's quite a facility they have over there. Mr. Hartley, Ron Hartley, who owns most of this shopping center and a lot of it over there in Medify, took me on a personal guided tour, and I don't know how many departments there are over there, but he knew the first names of everybody in every department. So it was quite nice having that, that, that tour. I attended a Veterans Day meeting this past week. I had the fortune, good luck, to be a judge at the car show again for the Canyon Lake Car Club this year, along with our city manager. And I don't know if you picked a winner. I didn't, but. And I don't know if you picked a winner, I didn't, but. And I'm sorry that the student of the month, is she going to be here next month, or are you just going to send her the certificate?
If you wish, we can invite her to the next council.
Well, I mean, I was just going to report on her, denied the interesting things that she had to say, but I won't do that if she is going to attend.
Well, we did get the new list for the upcoming, and we will have another student of the month, so we can have both of them attend at the December meeting if you wish.
Canyon Lake resident?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yes, I'll reach out, and we'll have both of them attend.
All right, well, I won't tell you all about the wonderful things that she accomplished. It was very, very interesting. And with that, I think that concludes my report for this past month. So the next, next council meeting is on December the 4th at 6:30 PM, open session. I don't know, 5:30 for closed session or five? It says 5:30, but.
For now, 5:30, but stay tuned.
Okay. Well, with that, we're going to adjourn this meeting at 9:34. Thank all of you out there for coming.